You're on, all right, let's call this meeting to order. This is the order of the meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Education Finance Committee on October eighteenth, twenty twenty four at one thirty P M. This meeting is conducted in the District Education Services Center Conference Room E, as well as on Zoom. And the meeting will be live streamed by the county channel. Public comments, if you have any, we can tell you how to get there, but it's already too late. If we have any kind of public comments, okay, fine. So we'll go right into the agenda. And it starts with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is approval of the agenda. You have a motion to approve the agenda? Yes, Miss Hay, would you make a motion?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, can you hear us?
Okay, so, yes, I had said so moved, seconded.
Okay, all right, all any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Miss Hay, how would you vote?
Hey, aye.
Okay, Mr. Campbell just stepped out, he'll be back. Next item is a approval of the September twelfth, twenty twenty four committee meeting minutes. And no, we already covered it, we don't have any comments, so we'll go with the committee meeting minutes. We have a motion to approve the September twelfth, twenty twenty four committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
I will second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Hey, aye.
Motion carries. So let's go right into the board budget. And the board budget, we'll put it up on the screen. Expect to be at twenty five percent expended and our salaries administrations were at twenty two percent, so we're under budget. Not having Rachel Wisneski on serving, that's why we're a little below budget. The all the other items, we are at five percent for local travel, thirteen percent for state travel, twenty percent for out of state travel, and eight point four percent of meeting stipends. Total, we are at twenty one point five six percent. So we seem to be well under budget, is there any comments, Miss Hay?
No, none from me, thank you.
I have none as well. So let's move on. Next item on the agenda is the transparency reports for June and August. And I really appreciate giving the opportunity to do two months. And I hope that we can just do one month at a time now on, makes it a lot easier. The June transparency report, if you don't mind, I'll start off and then ask you if you have any comments, is that okay, Miss Hay?
Yes, that sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Let's start page eight. Transparency report. Item four thirty five. And the question is, Henry Schein, S C H E I N, instructional supplies, high school programs. And it's a bill for two thousand four hundred and four dollars and twenty cents of the general fund. And now I've been doing this now for many years, I haven't seen Mr. Schein's name before. Who the heck is he and what does he sell? You know?
Henry Schein is a state vendor, state contract vendor. We've purchased various items from science, health, health sciences.
It's legitimate.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all you need to know. Next, next item is on page ten and eleven. And it's Soliant, S O L I A N T, healthcare LLC.
Yes, sir.
And it's for orthopedic, the handicapped, hearing handicapped, emotionally handicapped, learning disability, sped autism. All of this with this gentleman here. And my question is, I understand, I'm not questioning the need for it. My question is, the bidding is a bidding process for that, is that because it seems like a single vendor seems to dominate our sped support program. And I'm wondering if we have a competitive bid or fee only bidder? Or and when if we have a single source, has it been properly taken care of, you know?
We have state vendors that we use with federal funding, which has the federal requirement for competitive bidding because we don't have exemptions, but medical professionals and student services are exempt under our procurement code. So they don't have to be competitively bid, and so I has offered quality work for our sped services that we need. That's the feedback.
Okay, I've seen them before, but I really saw all the different entries and I was struck by it. And I just wanted to ask about it. Next item is page seventeen. Enable my child LTD, contract services for sped staff, nothing to sped, special education program, thirty eight thousand thirty two dollars.
Yes, enable my child is the Hello Hero program that we have.
Hello Hero.
Yes, that is their D V A that they go under, that's officially.
Okay, now I now I recognize, hello hero. Is that a annual contract?
We, the sped contract is, is we have a separate contract for sped services and another contract that was competitively bid for R F P for staff and student mental health services. So they both are on contract. One is exempted for student services under our general fund, and then the other was competitively bid because we use federal.
Okay, very, very, very good. Next item, I think it's on the same item here. I saw furniture expenses, I think it's on the same page. And my question to to Miss Crosby is furniture, you know, we use capital funds for that. And yet I see furniture every now and then being purchased. What kind of guidance does the district, have you given to the district about using operational funds? Or I'd call it durable good purchase?
In the district office at least, we encourage the use of state contract vendors. And the most commonly used vendor is new idea.
Yeah.
So if if funding hasn't been established for, say, the finance department, we might budget some, a little bit in our budget annually for a refresh of a new, whatever the needs are, and we go directly to new idea for those services. So that's where we, and we do something similar, we do it in technology. We have certain standard vendors that we will allow for purchases that are off of the normal cycle. And those types of things are, we refer them to specific vendor and that they may use them, they're typically on state contracts.
I'm always interested in durable goods versus expendable goods. Durable goods, we keep, last. Spendable goods, we buy paper, we use paper. So I just want to make sure that when we mix and match those things, that we're doing it willfully.
Yes.
And sometimes you, somebody's chair breaks, you gotta get a chair, understand that. But I just wanted to bring that.
Yes, and we kind of go on the consumable goods type thing. So for example, in eight percent of referendum funds, we don't buy consumable goods. Anything that has a value, a life of less than a year will not go in a bond fund.
Right.
We make sure that those are in sort of a general fund, general operating fund. But furniture does typically fall in, you know, maybe three to five years or something that.
Yeah, okay. Page twenty three. And Ronald Keith Kaiser, auto maintenance. I I've been used to seeing maintenance being done by dealers and others. This is a new one. And I was wondering if if he has, I just want to make sure he's not a brother in law, okay? That's what I want to make sure.
I believe, my memory is sort of pretty trampled, I'm gonna verify for you right here. He is a specialist. And I have to double check and pull it up. He was a specialist to work on some of our bigger body vehicles that we needed and came to the site for items that could not be removed or the towing expense was too much and kept another contract for that. But I will verify in a system right now.
Okay, I just, just like you say, we have to be very careful in that we don't get into the brother in law kind of things we could be causing trouble for us. Page forty six. Denson's and Associates Professional, that's item twenty seven fifty, professional development. I've got two different things in the district office, total of about fourteen, over fifteen thousand for this professional development. And the question is, who is this guy?
Actually, it's a company that came out and provided professional development
Okay.
for special education that was paid from our A T S I.
Okay, yeah, I see that's a special federal, okay.
That's part of the plan of trying to.
Can you tell me who who was what? Part of the district office that asked for it?
Specialty.
Special ed, okay, okay, fine, that's, all right. Page fifty three. Page fifty three. Items number three, thirty one fourteen to thirty one thirty three, charging carts. Am I glad to see you here?
Yes, sir.
Charging carts.
With power technologies.
Is that a golf cart or what are you?
Absolutely not, that is for the refresh of our K through one iPads. Since the iPads stay in the classroom for our youngest kids, we put a cart, a lockable cart in there that charges overnight and it keeps it safe for frying hands.
Okay, I was wondering what that was, thank you. I see it's on student activity, is it because it's funded student activity, is that the money that they pay?
Yes, tech fee money.
Yeah, tech fee.
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right, got it. Page, here we go. Here we go, page fifty three to sixty one. That's a bunch of repair tickets. And most of them are four hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty three cents. We've had this discussion before. And Miss Ingrid, oh, right, brings it up. It does seem that I understand these are replacing the screens, is that?
Yes, they're usually replacing screens.
Right.
And those are the second screen replaced, right?
My question is, can't we get a laptop with a stronger screen so we don't break them as often?
Honestly, the laptops we do purchase do follow mill spec regulations. So these are hardened devices, now they're not like a tough book that you would see a police officer carry because that would almost double the price of the device. So we get as much security as we can and durability out of our products and still trying to maintain a budget limit.
My question to you is, have you done a cost benefit analysis? You show that by not having to spend four hundred and sixteen dollars on it every year, that we might be able to save money by paying for a more expensive hardened device? Have you done that kind of analysis?
No, sir, we have not.
That would, that would be an interesting thing to do. Because kids are hard, hard on them, I understand that.
Yes, sir, especially our middle school kids.
Yeah, yeah, right, but they're essential, okay. That's all I had, and just a note. Just in the month of June, which is a big month, thirty seven hundred and ninety one invoices. No disputed charges. No instance of fraud. I I met with Mr. Michael Moore, the new county administrator. I gave him the copy. And I said, if you want to get trust in the community so you can pass referendums, somebody needs to go over these at this level. Is it, our district spends more than twice of what county council spends, much more than twice. This is a way of somebody looking at it to ensure we don't buy three hundred weighted blankets or an eight hundred dollar playground without somebody knowing about it. Okay, so I don't know if he's gonna pay much attention to that. But I can say I gave him this. Now, who does this, rather than me doing this every month and going through this? Do you do this every month?
I prepare the report and then I send it to our internal controls for review, who then sends it to Tanya, who then ends up here. And previously before that, Jennifer reviewed it, went through, but then when we had some restocking, so yeah, there's a lot of eyes on this.
This is important, and it's important because when you do this, you take away temptation of somebody saying, well, I can get away with this. I can, I can cheat a little bit, buy this, no, you know, no one's gonna know because there's thirty seven hundred invoices and no one's gonna check. But if they know, someone's gonna check. Temptation follows along.
We actually, a year ago or so, implemented a new process where the procurement folks, Jennifer leading that at the time, and then addicted to Kaylee, implemented a new process where we not only are doing requisitions for invoices, but now we're doing them for every single P car transaction. So every one of those transactions goes through an electronic process and units and has a list of approvals based on the funding code, the department it comes from, what they're buying. And so it's really seen at least twice. So those folks will see it and then the group that she just mentioned looks at it again from this report perspective. So every transaction is looked at multiple times before purchase and and then in the monitoring of the budget as well.
Right, right.
Okay, let's, let's move on to a quick one.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to go back and I'm not sure over you, how you, how you, how you do it. I just wanted to speak to you in terms of technology. From the technology perspective, we went over the the screens and some of those questions we did ask. And what we, what we came up with was that some of, some of these were maybe twice, the kids broke their screens twice. But when you look at them from, in the term of a pie, it may have seemed like it's though it's a large amount. But when we look at it from a perspective of pies in the whole district, it was not, it was, was not as much as it seemed to be in terms of looking at, looking at it this way versus, I guess, I guess you said, looking at it from a small scope versus a large, a larger pie in terms of what I've said. So I just want to put it out there, it may seem as though there's a large amount. But what we've came up with that, we believe that we were getting more and more bank for our book and that we could appreciate Mr. Excuse me, don't, don't put it on my heart, not my, yeah, thank you, it's a show on. We can appreciate that, that his, on his skillfulness and basically in terms of how he was protecting the district's money in terms of what product he was bringing. So I did, I did want to, I do want to bring that out because we did grill you a lot in that meeting. And obviously, we did question a lot and that, and Roger, but Mrs. Woodright, so I just wanted to put that out there. So if people could just take a second to also look at it from a pile of, pile of.
And I will say, one reason why it does look so large is the fact that a lot of the kids, once they get their first free breakage, they hide their broken screens until the end of the year when they turn it in at the end of May. So we get inundated with a humongous pile of damaged devices all at once. So, and we have to repair those devices to get them ready for the next school year. But we then do bill those parents for that second damage.
Okay, Mark, thank you.
Yeah. I think both points are valid. Cheryl, you did something when you were head of operations where you started questioning the closeouts, which was the right thing to do. And, you know, that had been going on. And, and so you're questioning and then having the rest of us see how you question is instructive and as that cascades down the hierarchy as Mrs. CFO, Ben O's are doing. And then what Mr. Smith is saying, it comes together, but we do need that type of questioning to make sure God and everybody knows we're looking in so.
Mr. Campbell, do you have any questions or any comments to say on the June transparency report? You know, I have a course of announcement for my operation. Okay. All right, Miss Hay, do you have any question or comments on the June transparency report?
No, I do not, thank you.
There's David, and David is online.
All right.
David is online.
Okay, great, great. Mr. Carr or Dr. Carr? Welcome.
You're muted. You're muted, sir. Dr. Carr, you're muted, so we couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I was a little late, a new computer and new system, so it took me a few minutes to get all set up. But glad to be with you.
Okay, great, great to have you. So let's move on to August. August transparency report. Item number five ninety five, page seven. That is activity. Activity five ninety five, activity books. Amplify Education Primary.
And calling.
Calling Kellton Head Island Elementary. And asking them what they use it for. And let us, just let us know, again, not saying fraudulent or bad or anything, I just, it, it causes a little concern, not concern, but question.
And I do believe instructional services is all behind it.
Yeah, you know, I'm sure as well, that's just kind of unusual that we have, have that, okay? Next one is number six oh five. Arbitrator pay trust account, what is that? Arbit, Arbiter Pay Trust Account. What is that?
Yes.
I can't explain it, I can't. Arbiter Pay is the offender that we use to pay all of our, uh, referees.
Yes.
Yeah, courts officials.
Courts officials.
And so, uh, that's how we have to pay them through the Arbiter Pay.
And they book their, um, games from it and then are approved by the athletic director and then they can receive payment through that system.
Okay. I didn't recognize that. Uh, next one is, uh, item seven thirty-one. Oh, yes, this was, this was a great thing to me. Um, Buford Jasper Water and Sewer Authority. You know, when I go through these, I look at the title. I look at what it's based on and then I, I look at the, the dollar amounts. And when I looked at it, I saw that the district office in August had a bill from uh, Buford Water and Sewer Authority for eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cents, which was way out there compared to others. And I just thought it might reinforce some belief by others in the district that there's a lot of sewage here. Anybody catch that?
Yes, yes.
But, but it does, you know, when I, when I see that, when I get, I get those bills too. And it's also not based on a number of times you, uh, provide sewage treatment opportunities, but it's also your watering and so on. And I, we don't have a lot of grounds here.
There is no sprinkler system.
There's no sprinkler system here. And yet, when I look at the bills compared to other smaller or not as big facilities, I've seen what's going on. Do we got a water leak someplace? So this might need to go to operations to ask you.
We had a flood in, in HR.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was supposed to.
There was, there was, there was, there was a, a big
A fight, yeah. A flood in HR.
Yeah.
In the hallway, yes, it was, it was major.
And Mr. Oding's office had a flood recently as well.
Okay.
So, yes.
It was a big fight by the, by the water fountain.
Glad to see it was.
That was in August and that was, it was significant.
It was huge.
Yeah, a standing water.
Well, I just let you know that someone's looking at it. Yeah. Operation responded very quickly. Also, on that same page, uh, when I look at the difference between Battery Creeks, uh, and May River High School's bills, it's very different, um. May River High School is four times approximately the water sewage used in Buford High. Or Battery, Battery Creek High School. And I know May River High School is a bigger high school, but it's not four times bigger. So that's something maybe operations can take a look at too, is, you know, what's kind of water use, but.
We'll take a look, Colonel.
Yeah. Uh, page twenty-three. Sticking together. Page twenty-three and it's item number twenty-one forty-one. McDougall Law Firm. This is Board of Education and it's ten thousand dollars. I don't remember McDougall Law Firm. Do you? Do you know what we, what the board paid a McDougall Law Firm ten thousand dollars for?
I have to ask.
It's been a settlement.
I think it's a settlement.
Yes.
It was also due, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a litigation settlement. So it's a settlement.
Litigation settlement, okay. There it is. Yep. All right, I should have gone to the piece of personnel matter. All right, good. Page twenty-four. Notable Incorporated, not, not, notable, N-O-T-A-V-L-E Incorporated. Can I switch license renewal?
Can be software.
Can be software.
Yes, it's basically an interactive classroom software that allows the teachers and students to interact in a quiz-based learning environment.
Okay. Right? It's a pretty expensive.
Um, yeah, I would, you'd have to talk to ISP on the validity of.
All right.
Could we send that to academics?
Yeah, we, we should have it. I think that's something that's got to be looked at at academics and so on.
Yeah.
Um, so in month of August, we had three thousand eight hundred and fifty-six invoices. But we had six fraudulent disputed charges as well. Could you give us a little bit on those disputed charges, please?
The disputed charges at the bottom were, um, well, the Cengage Learning and the fraud dispute in the ACROCA building. Um, they were both unauthorized charges and Bank of America swiftly came in and was able to uh, give us refunds for those transactions and the cards were replaced immediately anytime we have transactions.
And somebody hack into our car, our account?
Yes, it's an unauthorized, unauthorized transactions from an outside entity. Um, we, no internal fraud.
Okay. And tell me about our security measures to try to prevent that from happening.
Our policies and procedures require that campus finance specialists check their authorization log in Bank of America every morning when they come in. That allows them to see the activity, um, for the past three days on the card down to the exact time that the card was used. Uh, and over the weekends as well. We have a global card access program uh, where principals, uh, receive notifications every time the card is spiked as well. So from their phone, they have convenience to say whether it is valid or if it's invalid, if they don't recognize, because the approval should have came through them in the first place. Um, the third tier is that Bank of America, they recognize any activity that doesn't seem to be in line with our purchasing trend that we do. They, um, email us, myself and another P card administrator to let us know to report fraud or they'll block, conveniently block the card. Um, and then we'll have to call Bank of America, run through a security process to unlock the card and report whether or not any of the transactions were fraud.
I'd like to add to that, the card is not allowed to be held overnight or taken overnight, has to stay in school. And it's kept behind two locked doors. So it's a locked default and a locked door to the office and then maybe the, and the locked building as well. So, uh, we do have that safe car else.
All right. Colonel?
Um, well, again, thanks for the probing. One of the things maybe that operations can do is we can sit down and review anything that's operation triggered, uh, so that you can put an asterisk beside it. Coming here, so we'll try to answer that as well. So thanks, thanks for highlighting.
Uh, any questions, Mr. Campbell, on the August?
No.
Ms. Hay, any questions on the August transparency report?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Well, the consolidated reports, obviously, near the others, I'm not going to go through those unless if any people, uh, have, or other guests here have a question on the consolidated report. But I, I reviewed them and they all, they all looked, uh, covered everything very well. Okay. So let's go to S R update. Hallelujah, hallelujah. I can imagine. So talk to us, Denise.
Well, we are finished. You can see we have spent a hundred percent. We've actually submitted claims this week for full reimbursement and submitted our reports as well. We will have one more report based on last year's expenditures and student probably access coming, but we really are closed, um, those accounts there. And, um, it went simply on, on doing that. We did not add any new activities. We just used the same activities. One of those things you can see on the summary
Yeah.
here is that, you know, we, we talked about furniture.
Right.
Some of those furniture costs were approved and there were quite a bit of funds in this for, um, furniture and Freddie Lawton, um, actually helped led that and did an amazing job and we had some leftover, um, to extend that, uh, well. And so those were the areas for the last month of September and they are fully expanded.
Okay, and any, what personnel actions have been taken, uh, people that have been positions that have not been filled now that the, the funding is
So decisions, there were forty-seven positions originally, full-time positions in the S R funds and back through the months of December or January, and then ultimately a decision was made in February by senior leadership team uh, of what to, how to shift sunset or continue those positions. And so we made decisions about all of them. I believe it was a seven of those were added to the general fund. Um, others were absorbed into other roles of the district and some positions were eliminated and they had opportunities to move into other positions within the district. So no one lost a job.
No one lost a job.
No one lost a job. Um, positions were shifted, however, and forty-seven we were able to absorb and uh, manage that within vacancies that we had, other roles that were, became open. And then some, uh, through the general fund. Um, just in the finance department, we've added one additional position during S R and we happened to have a retirement right about the same time, a few months prior to this ending, and she
Recording in progress.
It was made before, uh, right before March first. And so they had an opportunity to put in uh, for another position if there's, was sunset.
Mr. Campbell, do you have any questions on this?
No.
Ms. Hay, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Any, any board members, any issues?
I'm sorry.
Any questions?
No, uh, maybe she, she answered my, my main question. In, 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 in terms of furniture, um, how are we, how are we marketing that, that, the, the basket that would, that, that would receive? How, how, how do we market that? Who, who was the former doing that? Do we, do you know?
Um, I, I don't know the process, Mr. Lawton, what he, we got. I just know they had furniture needs and these were funds that they used, utilized first. And then they moved to the rest of their funds.
Yeah. And you said Freddie, you said Freddie was involved.
Oh, yes.
And, and on this. That's good.
So we, we, we'll bring that up at operations. All right, just, yes, okay.
Good, thank you.
He can't cram his door when he's there anymore. That's the real story. Because apparently there's gaps and needs there. And, um, so, uh,
fortunate to be able to do a little extra at the end for them, so.
I, I want to give you my, your sheer thanks and admiration. This, you, you handled seventy-three million dollars.
No, love.
I understand that you, you guided us through that. And, uh, to do that and close it out with a zero balance is a significant accomplishment and we are to be congratulated.
I wish the accountant was here that actually moves everything in the system. She's not here today. I was going to bring her.
Well, please pass that on. Pass it.
Well, it's Green is her name, Dan.
And now she's taking on student activities and she's doing amazing.
Great, wonderful, good.
Yes.
Okay, next item on here is administrative regulation, OS twenty-two. Parental parent support group booster clubs. Who would like to talk about?
I will take this one. So recently, um, in this legislative session, a law was passed uh, requiring that school districts, um, have their parent support group uh, volunteer organizations register with the school board. So we took that on as this whole district. Um, and so, um, and that requires them to provide information about their uh, status, having, um, registered with the Internal Revenue Service and actively filing their Form nine ninety nonprofit organization tax forms every year. Their secretary of state, public charities forms every year and being registered active and registered annually with them. And then having, uh, just have a policies and procedures, which are bylaws in their case, to, uh, formalize procedures within their organization. So, uh, it is, they are due August first. This bill, uh, came out. Uh, we had very little time to, um, to put information out, but we were able to, um, get a report out to, a letter out to all of our support organizations through our principals and request that information come back. Uh, and I believe that September thirtieth was the deadline that we gave. So this administrative rule has been written and, um, and, and reviewed by Ms. Cartledge.
Good.
Um, to incorporate the language of the new law. And so it references that, uh, the board has authority to do certain things, one of which would be a background check on someone that, uh, that is an officer of a support organization that has a felony charge or other financial crime, a criminal charge. Um, and so that could, uh, potentially remove that individual from an officer, have them removed as an officer. But just understand that parent support groups, the district does not have, uh, true authority over them. They are, um, their authority is the, um, attorney general's office of the state and the state secretary of state public charities organization. Um, so other than that, or, or enforcement. Um, we cannot demand an audit. We cannot demand that they remove an officer. We cannot demand that they add something, add someone. Um, and so we have very few authorities other than the, we, we control the privilege of them using our facilities uh, and our likeness, uh, our name, logo and so on. So, uh, this is an attempt statewide to gain some control over that and make sure that our folks, our groups are registered and are properly filing their tax returns and registering and staying active. If they are not active with the secretary of state's office, they become, and had it filed with them for the IRS for three consecutive years, they can have their nonprofit status revoked and they are not allowed at that time to fundraise. So that is the eventual, uh, penalty that they would receive from the state. Um, and then they wouldn't be authorized to fundraise on the school district's behalf or the school's behalf. So, um, this is an effort to just get a handle on things, clean it up, get, become aware of, um, of the organizations that exist, how many are out there and what, uh, practices they have in place. And if they do not have one of those requirements, that we are making an attempt to help them and assist them, connect them with the right organizations that can assist them. Um, we have, we had planned, actually it was already booked, a, um, a representative from the secretary of state's office, you know, public charities division was booked to come um, speak to three separate groups, uh, a few weeks ago and Hurricane Helene, uh, canceled that day. So, um, I believe that was the, it was a few different hurricanes and everything. So, um, we canceled, but we're going to reschedule her. Uh, it'll likely be in January. And we were going, our plan was to meet first with the, uh, principals because they had an early morning principals meeting, midday with athletic directors and bookkeepers and evening with parent support group members. So, uh, so they'd have a chance to come after work hours. Um, so we're, we're to, our goal is to get a handle on this, get it active, get folks that need help, the help they need, get training. And then we are on a path to, um, getting, being in a better position um, and informing folks what they need to do, uh, and better than we have in the past. So it's just a, it's about continuously improving this area. So uh, this A R just formalizes state law and the changes in here are all about almost verbatim from the state. And the changes in here are all about almost verbatim from the state law. So. So basically the requirement to report files to August first. Um the board makes a request criminal records check of certain members if they suspect they have criminal backgrounds. Um so that's the basically the summary of the changes in this administrative.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, do you have any questions? Ms. Hay, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, uh other board members, uh any questions? Dr. Carr, any questions?
No, I'm just following along. Thanks.
This is, this is probably one of the easiest. Issues that you can have um financial problems with. And I looked at uh you have big controversies or scandals. It always seems to come from booster clubs. This is not just in high schools, it's in universities and everybody else, but I've worked at. And so I I was really glad to see the state come up with something. And my question now is, why do we have any action that we have to do at the board level?
Information only, I just need to.
But I I I think it would be good to mention this at the full board meeting on the. The committee report so that the rest of the board and the public knows that it's not uh. Business as usual in in that arena anymore, that there there are steps that have to be taken. I I also. I also need to understand how we have. Put this out to all the groups so that they know that this is happening.
Um so I had in, don't think, I don't believe I have provided this yet to. It's been a while since we had a principals meeting, so I'm not sure. But um I'll look back and if I had not updated, I'll make sure that uh I believe we have our next meeting in November. And so I'll make sure to, if I haven't already done that, I have a. On this topic right now, but I can make sure that they haven't. No, I did meet with them because I had sent them the email with the letter saying, this is the letter I need you to forward. And in the meeting, principals meeting, I said, I had just sent you a letter. And this is what it's about and I need you for this to your organization. So I did provide an update on booster clubs. Yes, and what it what I could do is a reminder for those who have not. Provide and send something in to follow up with them and to make sure that they are all um off their organizations during times.
Also, I I know this is uh this within that wheelhouse. It makes me wonder uh in terms of the state, thought it was that serious to do this. Then that brings me to the question of of uh maybe even the future topic in this. To understand what do we have in place of mechanisms in terms of S I Cs and P T Os. How, what what are their, what are their processes aligned in terms of 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 the of these as as well? Because I I I've even had questions that asked me um kind of what's the difference in between some of them and. P T O and S I C, I've learned, I know that now, but also in 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 the process of what's the difference between such P T O and and the uh. The um. The booster club because they're both job, their job is to basically uh raise funds for the school. And I said, well, one is more towards sports, but from what I've been told that. That P T O has given sports money as well. So the question again is that, so. Uh I just want to clearly get more clear of understanding what those processes are and how they uh how they how they align with each other. In terms of the dues and notes and what's that process? Maybe uh every other time, maybe not today, but yeah.
In response to that, um first of all, school improvement councils don't handle money. So they would not be considered. Compliant with this with this law. Uh because this is all about the funding and registration of their annual nonprofit tax reports. So um as far as P T Os and booster clubs, you are correct. I have seen P T Os that both have a mission. Of academic support as well as athletics. Booster club, you're correct, is typically um athletic. And then you have other ancillary booster clubs that may be more academic depending on how you view them. Like R A T C or uh fine arts or um. Uh band, yeah, that's what I was trying to think of. So um you have a combination of all of them. And there are no dues and notes from the school district's perspective because these are outside organizations that are not part of ours. We cannot dictate what they do or don't, but they do have regulatory agencies. I'm not sure about regulatory that one. Um guiding agencies at the national level. They have national P T O. A and P T O associations, national booster club associations that um guide their work. They can use, get copies of bylaws, get processes and procedures from those organizations. But if you're asking us to prepare a a what they can do with it. We don't have a guideline of for booster clubs and organizations. We have recommendations on how they form, how they. May operate and can link them to resources that would help them and assist them in their work. Um and what, you know, building your bylaws and that sort of thing, but I'm not sure I would have anything to respond. Um to what you're requesting.
So for 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 instance, let let's say for instance, uh we have a uh. For the P T O, P T P T Os was within the schools. So are there accounts outside the school or are they outside?
Are prohibited from interacting and commingling those funds. We cannot, we will not allow a district employee to be an officer or a member of that organization. Uh or an officer of the organization, particularly in the financial area, because we don't want those funds brought in to get handed to the bookkeeper. And depositing our funds and they're really there, we don't allow them to mingle funds. It's all summer.
Well, 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 see, that's 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 a total uh gray area. And I don't think that some people understand and then and then first of all, a lot of people don't understand it. I I I'm telling you right now because people have asked me. How regularly do y'all monitor these P T O accounts? How regular? And I tell them off top, I know first, I didn't realize that. I know for sure that we do, we don't have access to boost booster clubs accounts. But I said, P T O, I'm not sure if that process is a bio is like, I I would have to get back to you on that, but. So now that that also tells me as a woman that I didn't understand, I think that that. Now, now is good for me, I understand it was good for the general public and that that's something that we should be putting out there. Like you know that that's that that if you give them money to them, don't think that you give it to the school and us indirectly. Because that's two different things. So that can be Miss Lydia and this is Miss woman, our job is to educate the public and to teach them as much as possible. So therefore I think that is very important that we do along with educating all these other other issues that we get.
Some of those points are in this administrative rule about the officer not the district employee not being an officer of the organization. So I could hit some of the highlights of what our regulation is and then I could answer questions that are specific to that, but. Um you um we and even with legal counsel, recent legal counsel, we are not allowed to monitor them. Or offer us to audit them in any way. They must have to, we we may suggest that. Um that they seek audit um or um or if law enforcement needs to be involved. Or the Attorney General's Office, those are the the governing bodies over those nonprofit organizations. So.
Got you. Uh and then and then my my last last two, last testing uh uh also is that. Excuse me, is uh. So for instance, if an S I, so if if an S I C meeting have, if if an S I C meeting have a meeting and they want to serve drinks and. Drinks and snacks, then that money would have to come from the school or 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 where would that come from? See, 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 that's that's money, even though it's not P T, even though it's not P T O, it's S I C. So that my 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 point is.
You said S I C?
But that I said S I C, I said S I C. So like 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 how we have like we have a joint board S I C meeting with.
This, yeah, the school improvement council maybe they may have refreshments by the school because they don't have any funding available to them. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm not talking about S S I C because uh one time I did attend an S I C meeting, they did have some stuff.
For that, yes, for the P T O to donate funding for it or something like that as well, so yes. And then to likely to be student activities.
And 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 then this is a last, I think, I just think uh also I think there would be, it would be uh, it would be a very. And I and I in the district's best interest to figure out to what degree. Was us not really having direct uh. Authority over them, how they use our our brands and our logos in terms of what they do because. Regardless of whether we like it or not, we still own that and if they go out and do something that is unethical or something that could be uh. That could, that could, that could, they could, they could get sued sued for, then with them using us, and we knowing and willingly. Then that puts us as a liability as well. And so I think that's a, that's a forward conversation that does need to take place at some point in time because. That is, I mean, and and really it should, the state way, we did this, that's something they should consider too. And they're asking us to do these different things that we're doing, but uh in my in my mind, that is a concern because that we have to be. Forward thinking that we want to respond when that situation occur. We want to already have the mechanisms in place about what that should look like and and how and how that looks. I just want to put that out there in terms of of that conversation.
Thank you.
Most um P T O, when they do raise money, whatever they raise it for, that money goes to them. It's them, people, you don't have it much. You don't have, you don't have no. If they raise a thousand dollars or something for students, that is given to them. That's that's standard.
But just in terms of of boosters, anything in terms of them having it, because you have some booster clubs. Who have large, large, large pockets of money and that people have asked questions about and that's just something else that we can discuss at another time.
Next item on the agenda is the minority and women's business enterprise report.
I'm just trying to go over to Ms. Turner. She has some good news for you.
I'm very happy to report uh for the second half of F Y twenty four, uh January first through June thirtieth. Uh we were able to meet our minority women business enterprise non-certified goal, actually more than. Ten percent was our goal and we achieved seventeen point seven percent of participation. Uh please do remember as as I am very excited, that is non-certified and certified together. Um but yes, so our six month figure to um expand was ninety five million. And we totally extended sixteen point nine million.
Especially since I've been.
Yeah, even even on this beautiful graph on the back, I think July through December twenty twenty was the last time that we were that close. So um we've been working hand in hand with the facilities, operations, the community. Um really doing our due diligence to get the information out there for what we're looking for, what we're seeking, advertising. Um and also working with our big contractors to ensure that they are subcontracting out with quality subcontractors. Who also uh are minority women business.
We we need to put that um the committee report and make sure you know, we have to pull forward. Any questions, Ms. Campbell? Ms. Hay, you have any questions? Ms. Hay?
Do you hear me?
Yes, do you have any questions, ma'am?
You can hear me now? No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Ms. Campbell.
Yes, very, very quickly, um um Ms. Turner, I'm I'm somewhat unfamiliar with the non-certified. Are there any governmental requirements in terms of our percentage?
So our our goal is ten percent to have certified minority women business enterprise. Um and non-certified are those who are not certified through the state of South Carolina or S C D O T. Uh which we've actually expanded those regulations of who qualifies as a certified minority women business enterprise. So we work with those that are non-certified as well and they may be certified in other states or anything else and those all into the category of. Non-certified. So we're making sure that we're capturing a big picture, not just this small pocket to show how far our efforts are are reaching. So.
So i- if I may just follow up, uh the percentage for certified is ten percent. That's the target?
Yes.
Oh, we're point four or five, so. Reason I'm asking question is if there are things you believe we can do. Individually as a board, operations and we we're all leaders.
Um absolutely, and and we're always open to suggestions as well from um people that you've worked with in the past. Uh we've discussed this extensively over the past few years. Unfortunately, the geographic location of Beaufort. Uh where you have Columbia, Charleston and Savannah, which are heavily saturated areas with uh minority women business and certified at that. Savannah doesn't count and there may not be enough work here to hold those resources down from Charleston and from Columbia. And I think the last analysis we did, there was less than twenty certified in Beaufort, Jasper and Hampton County. That would even pertain to any of the work that we do here. So we went through an extensive analysis, I think it was two years ago, if I'm correct. Um and and it does, and we keep that information handy, but we're still always willing to definitely expand our outreach. And if you have any ideas or suggestions, please let us know.
So I'd like to add, if I may, um Kaylee met with Marilyn. Ms. Marilyn Harris from the Black Chamber of Commerce. So she had a lunch with her one day or a meeting with her. Um and they had a great conversation. I had a conversation with Megan Morris of the Beaufort Chamber. Um and, you know, expressed their need to get, you know, as much opportunity, you know, get out there to um. Folks in the community as possible. So we've done that and then.
Raquel from E for All as well. They are receiving direct communication from me each time that we publish a solicitation or request for quotes now. Um it is sent directly to their inboxes or their their professional inboxes that they have so that they are aware to share it amongst the community as well. Um we're we're still trying.
If um one of the destroyers I had a couple of weeks ago, we were able to attend an organization, I mean, nothing about Hispanic Business Association. And um the Hispanic community, the expansion of businesses there is almost exponential. And so we have some Spanish speaking colleagues, maybe they can help us penetrate that community. On heels of it and other places, when you go down certain streets, like every third home has a truck and a cargo trailer. Where they started with. And so that may be a weight busting, but it's a point four or five.
I think so. Well, I mean, we're we're cussing it that almost twenty percent of what our uh controllable budget or that six month figure. Um of of expanding it with the non-certified minority women business enterprise. And I believe again, one of the the examples that came out of our last analysis that we did. Was it's really hard for the small businesses around here to open up their books and to get that certification. There's a. There's a barrier there distrust with um government and and funding and making sure that it's there to get that. And also South Carolina doesn't offer any kind of um reward or incentive for becoming certified. All it does is it it adds to our numbers on a report, but it doesn't do anything for them. And then there's a whole separate federal um certification that they have to get to work with the federal government. So. Yes, and and this, in the insurance requirements that are required to work on that level, um really, it's. It's not financially responsible for the business to even have those levels of insurance for some of those jobs. So um.
If I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If I could follow up, one of the things that that particular sanity is that the Hispanic Business Association is actually helping. Hispanic businesses. Fill out those forms.
Oh, nice.
And and they were, they were started by a husband and wife team created from Nicaragua in Mexico. And so they had to struggle and they're very sensitive to their compatriots who are coming now needing the help. I was blown away because I had never heard of them.
But this is wonderful. I haven't heard of them before either. So I will absolutely do some research.
Not negative, they're just trying.
No, if you have any contact information, I welcome that, please.
We can, Alex and um Victoria Nevada.
We can, Alex and Victoria and Nevada. And I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it in.
So I'm going to put you on the spot, Kaylee, with a question. If we were to find some certified or uncertified members, a female would qualify under the women owned business enterprise. Would a male owned business qualify under the minority?
Only if they serve in a minority, so black, Hispanic.
So depending on what the minority is, yeah, male would.
So Hispanic would qualify under this.
Yes.
Can I add one more thing? The state of South Carolina has created a minority. Organization headed by the former regional director of the district, Tim Scott, Mr. Laura Stacosta. She was there along with Ms. Harris, who spoke at that event, they were partners. And she has, she has a responsibility for handicapped, for Hispanics, for African Americans. Like five or six minority groups that they're trying to help and bring up. So we can connect the herd and just, and again, just trying to help. You folks have done wonderful work.
Let's move on to the audit update.
I don't have any documents for you today. I wanted to give you the up to, most up to date information. And our auditors were on site yesterday, so that tells you how up to date your information is today. So first of all, although we're in our fifth year of a contract with Malden and James. They have multiple offices throughout the southeast. We were previously under the, not direction, but the services of the Macon office. Macon, Georgia, for the last four years. And this year, we've been switched to be under the services of the Columbia, South Carolina office. We're very happy with that change. It has been run very, very smoothly. Every member of the audit team has changed. So we have all new people, all new leaders, all the way down the pan command. They hit the ground running. They actually pushed us very early to bring the trial balance. Basically, all the numbers in all our financial reports, give us the trial balance one week early. And although it was not easy, we managed to do it. So they were pleased. They were pushing us to do it a little earlier in the day, but we got it before five o'clock that day. So that has placed us in a position to get started earlier. We have really pushed hard, have a. Early on to get as much as possible prepared for them. And there are about three hundred and fifty audit items in a portal that we have to select and move documents into. Or they select a sample and we have to provide backup documentations for requisitions, the invoice, the package slip. For purchase or payroll, I need the H R personnel file, I need this, I need that. So that is, the bulk of the work is, is done. And the last area we're providing is fixed assets, which is all the capital assets of the entire school district. Which you can imagine, we have to pretty much get finished with everything first and then wrap all of that up. Which was given to me today for review. So I'll hopefully have that to them for, by Monday. They expect to have a draft to us by the end of October, actually, November. We typically have not had one until mid-November, mid to later November. I think we got it the week, we got it the week of Thanksgiving last year. So we are very happy with this team. They're pushing us in the right direction. There's certain things that need to get out early so that we can get responses for them, like confirmation, revenue confirmations and cash confirmations. And we were able to get those out and have most of them back already. So it is going extremely well. I have no issues. We've had no issues of, like, that would result in a finding of any kind at this point. So we are looking very favorable at completing this well before the December first deadline. We're hoping no later than the Friday before Thanksgiving. So that should be almost two weeks earlier than in previous years. And, and it's going extremely well. Do y'all have any things to add?
I do. I am very pleased. So we have a procurement audit. We're only, we only have to have one every three years, maybe three years at a time. But we opt to do one annually. Yeah, coincide with the financial audit. And procurement audits are always a struggle, because you know, we're talking about procurement code and policies and procedures are going through and sampling. But now that we're on a state model code, it's gone really easy. And this, since I've been here, this has been the, the smoothest year with the procurement audit for what they're asking for. And the communication has been extremely clear. So I'm happy. So I'm not sitting in summertime.
Yes, yes. So it's a lot less stressful and we're able to actually take a day off or two here or there. We're able to balance our lives a little better during. So that's important.
Ms. Campbell, do you have any? Ms. Hay, do you have any questions or comments?
Ms. Hay had to leave, so please, not on.
Any other board member?
David's on.
I'm good. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Okay, it's a good thing that you have a new team. It's always a good thing. Different eyes. You know, you, they look at things a little bit and, and that, that's, that's a plus and that's a plus for that firm. To do that. And because that, that's, we changed audit firms and that was a good thing. We changed audit firms. But I would rather stay with the same audit firm, not changing the different teams. So that you get an objective. Future topics, Mr. Campbell, do you have any future topics? Ms. Hay's not on. Dr. Carr, do you have any topics you'd like to hear about from the finance committee?
Not at this time. It was great to be part of the meeting, so I'm a little more up to speed with all the issues and discussions and it's been really helpful.
Great, thank you. Oh, I've got something. Y'all gave me a report last year that I put on this spreadsheet that breaks out costs, salaries, benefits, purchase service, total supplies, other. Total cost enrollment, cost per student, Title One. You're going to be closing out, close out the year. I can send you my copy if you want to edit it, but I, I would like to see this, this is more valuable. If I give one, one sheet of paper to the board members and they can see what the costs are for every school in the district. And I think, I use it all the time. And I use it not only when I talk to the public, I use it when I talk to principals. And they start whining about how they don't get enough money. Let's see, see where you stand. And it, it, it really works out very well. It's very, very, very helpful. So could I expect that around the first of December? You've got new board members coming on in January. And I'd like to be able to go through it with existing board members before they leave. And then give that to the new board members during their January process. Okay.
I have three more. Three more items.
Oh, three more?
For the future.
All right, future topics, all right, go ahead.
The first quarter financial report for F Y twenty five. O E eighteen, the food and nutrition report update. And the F Y twenty five budget book.
Oh. Getting started, all right, good.
And then all the other standard. Except for S R, we, we bring you up for guidance and stuff. So the other, the board monthly lady report, the September transparency and the hundred K reports.
Maybe looking for our next meeting.
Next meeting would be on the fourteenth. Ms. Hay is asked if we can do it at one o'clock or earlier.
We're, we're.
Somehow we say one o'clock.
One o'clock, the.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. Right, a work, a work session.
Work session, so the next work, the board meeting is scheduled November, it's November twelfth. That would be a board meeting that's here and then our work session is the twenty second.
All right. Anything, nothing else on the agenda? Adjourned by unanimous consent, this is no objection. Thank you very much, Dean. It's superb, what you always do.